Okay, at 7:30 we'll begin the meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City Council Meeting for the City of Fairway, Kansas. It is Monday, November 8th, 2021, 7:30 PM. I don't have any announcements. Nathan, do you?
I do have two announcements for this evening. The first is that next month for our December City Council Meeting, typically how the process would work is that any newly elected officials would be sworn in and any outgoing officials would be recognized. As it happens, we don't have any outgoing elected officials this go around. So however, all five, including the mayor, will be sworn in again for their new term. And then, right now, our plan will be to, historically, we've always broken away for about a 30-minute recess where we would have a reception to welcome the new and thank the outgoing. We're going to continue that for this year and sort of combine that with our annual appreciation for the boards and former elected officials. So we will be inviting them to come to the City Council Meeting that month and participate in that reception, which we'll do next door for about 30 minutes. So that will take place, the invitations will go out to those board members here, current volunteers of Planning Commission, VZA, along with past elected officials. So look for that to come. And we'll probably send you all a courtesy copy so you can see what it looks like. But that will be next month. I believe it's the 13th. So we'll do the swearing-in ceremony and then immediately break into the reception for about 30 minutes. And then the last thing I would, okay, I'll turn it up here in just a second. The other announcement that I would make is that when we get to the December City Council Meeting, we will move back to our normal seating arrangements at the desk. So just so you all are aware, when you show up next month, that's what it'll look like. So I'm going to turn that up.
And one of the reasons we're making this change in the social gathering next month during the meeting, normally we combine that with the staff luncheon, but because of COVID and how large that group would get, the staff will have their own holiday luncheon, and then we'll do ours to thank the volunteers and the committee members and the prior elected officials that will attend, hopefully, and combine that with the swearing-in ceremony, and then we can keep the two groups smaller. It's the reason we're doing that. Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation that I would like to read into the record this evening. This is for the Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and the indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, Melanie Heppertley, the Mayor of the City of Fairway, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Fairway, Kansas, dated this 8th day of November 2021. All right, next on the agenda is the monthly report of the standing committees. Consolidated Fire District Number Two. Is the chief here this evening?
No.
Okay, then we will let his report stand as submitted. Administration, David?
Thank you, Mayor. David Watkins, Ward Three. The Administration Committee did not have a meeting after the last council meeting, and prior to tonight, we had one scheduled. But we were so efficient at the Finance Committee meeting that we tackled one of the items there, and I think Nathan wanted to sleep in Thursday, so we postponed the meeting because we didn't really have anything else to tackle. But maybe we will shortly. Nathan, anything else you'd like to add?
I will let the report stand as submitted.
Any questions concerning admin? All right. Police, Tanya?
Thank you, Mayor. The Police Committee met on October 29th, and I understand it was a good meeting, and thank you, Chief, for your report. I'll let you add anything that you wish.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. I'll just let my report stand.
Any questions concerning Police Committee? All right, Public Works, Kelly?
Public Works did not meet this month, but I'd like to accept Bill's Public Works report and stand as submitted. I'd like to thank, though, the crew from Public Works for assisting Parks and Rec in the driveway trick-or-treat event, and help for assisting with creating the Sanders Workshop at the multipurpose room in the pool, and then also Chris Mann for helping out with the Police Department and helping with Deborah's desk to get that straightened out. So, thank you.
Any questions concerning Public Works? All right, Parks and Rec, Tom?
Tom Cotter, Ward Two. The Parks and Rec Department did not meet last month, but they have been very busy, as you can see from the report. The driveway trunk-or-treat thing was great. My son loved it. It also paired with his birthday quite nicely, so it worked out for us. I want to thank the other departments for helping with everything with Parks and Rec as well. So after that, I will let the report stand as submitted.
All right, any questions concerning Parks and Rec? Okay, Finance, Joe?
Okay, waiting for Parks and Rec. We went by it. Joe Levin, Ward Three. We met on October 27th, Committee as a whole. First order of business was a report from Nathan, and he had good news for us regarding the sales tax and cash flow. Both are running ahead of budget, and we're happy to see that. And then the committee met on the subject of the timing of our, the start of our council meetings. That's an item on the new business later tonight. And with that, Nathan?
I'll let the report stand and have answered any questions.
All right. Any questions for Finance? Okay, moving on to the monthly reports of special committees. Tree Board, Nathan?
No report.
Okay, we will open public comment on the consent agenda items only. I will read those into the record. A, approved minutes of the previous regular and special city council meetings. B, approved claims and appropriations, ordinance number 1749, October 2021. C, approved the purchase of a new police department patrol vehicle. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment concerning these consent agenda items? Chief, do you see anyone? All right, we'll close this public comment section and turn to the vote of the consent agenda. These items are determined to be routine enough to be acted on in a single motion. However, this does not preclude discussion. If a council member requests, an item may be removed from the consent agenda for further consideration and a separate motion. Does council wish to remove any particular item?
Jenna Bravsky, Ward Four. I don't wish to remove it. I wanted to make a comment on one of them, if that's all right. I just want to point out, thank you to Chief and to Mandy for looking into hybrid vehicles and putting a memo together about that. Really appreciate you guys taking that to heart, and hopefully in the future it'll be more feasible. It doesn't look like it was this year.
Okay.
Can I comment?
Is there a motion?
Can I comment on that, Mayor? No.
Certainly.
Okay. Just so the council is aware of this, we are getting really close on that, moving that direction. It's just, we're just not quite there yet for our agency.
Understood.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through C.
It's been moved and seconded, that items A through C on the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, item A. I would like to reopen the public hearing concerning the TIFF district. That was continued from our last meeting in October, and it also had been continued after our September meeting. I will open the floor for any comments from the audience, or anything that you might have received, Nathan, in the way of emails?
I did receive two emails today. One of them, actually, during our previous meeting, and the individual did not support the establishment of a TIFF district. The other inquiry I received was just questions and didn't provide an opinion.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Mayor and council members. Bob Johnson of the Paulsonelli Law Firm. Of course, yep. Bob Johnson of the Paulsonelli Law Firm, 5332 Falmouth Road, Fairway, Kansas, appearing on behalf of the developer tonight, represented by Austin Bradley. Austin's with me here tonight in case any questions are more relevant for him. As I said last time we were here in October, I don't want to belabor what we've already relayed to you or waste your time to the extent that I'd tell you more facts that are the same thing you've already heard. We've been in front of you several times. So in respect of that, I will stand for any questions. Certainly, as I said, Austin is available for any as well.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, Jim.
Hello, Melanie.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Poplinger, 5300 Aberdeen.
Thank you.
I've got to tell you, I thought of about half a dozen reasons not to come tonight.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
Well, good. I suspect a lot of people are in that same boat, that they have other things to do. But I know, I know what it's like to sit where you all are and have nobody here, and you get no feedback. And like any legislative or regulatory body, that's not a good thing. I'm sure it's a surprise, no surprise to any of you that know me, that I oppose a TIFF district. First of all, the way I see it, it's nothing but corporate welfare. The dollars that should be paid to support municipal services, fire district services, county services, are instead being redirected to improve private property and produce profits for the property owner. I don't believe that's proper. Secondly, the property owner and its tenants will not be paying their fair share of the cost of the services that are provided, the cost of maintaining the public infrastructure, etc. Those are just two general reasons that I oppose this concept. I understand it was developed originally to facilitate or encourage the redevelopment of rundown property that was undesirable for any number of different reasons. I find it hard to believe that any property in the City of Fairway is undesirable. Third reason, got to read my own writing here. Oh, yes. The only reason that this property would fall within the definition of a conservation area is that its owner has, over the course of many years now, not maintained it, not taken the action necessary to upgrade it, have basically allowed it to get to be in the condition it's in. It was the intention from the very beginning, which was obvious from previous times that they came before this body, that they didn't want that office building. They wanted something else. And they've set out to get it, and set out to get it with the public paying for it. Again, this isn't right. And finally, this would not be fair to the adjacent property owners that have maintained their property, in fact, renovated their property, major remodeling even, on their own dime. Why should they have to do that, and then their neighbor come along and have the city finance the project for them? Also, this is setting a precedent. If the city does this, this will not be the last request of this type that comes along. I would bet money, marble, or chalk that the next one would be the Fairway Shops. We had the request once before from a previous owner. I suspect that would happen again. So I urge the city to, at this point, not waste any more time on this. Just say no and put an end to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one, is that correct, Chief? Pardon? I can't see. Good evening?
My name is Skip Hensler. I live at 5657 State Park Road, and I grew up in this neighborhood. And I remember when this property was Smiley's, the old golf range. And I haven't been following too much, just getting involved a little bit, what's going on. But I think I couldn't say better than Jim did, of all the things, the reasons why I would be opposed to it. I think Fairway ought to really hold tight and figure their marketability for this property. It's a great asset. It's got great potential. And I just think that for tax reasons, I think there's great opportunities for the city to do well with it. I think, as driving by through this property for the last 15 years, 10 years, this property has not been well-maintained. And I think that they should be ashamed for the way they have maintained it and let it go. No question about it. And I just, as a resident of Fairway, and I'm hoping to stay here for a number of years, I hope that the city will hang tight and firm on not giving this request, and certainly believe there's great, great potential for this property. Great things to happen. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. We appreciate it. We're good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, seeing no one else, per the chief. I can't see you guys, so if anyone else wants to speak, now's the time. We good? Okay. Then I am going to close the public hearing on the TIFF district. We will go on to item B. Consider Ordinance Number 1745, an ordinance of the governing body of the City of Fairway, Kansas, making findings and establishing a redevelopment district pursuant to KSA 12-1770 and amendments thereto. Before I open this to discussion to the council, I'd like to say just a few words of clarification, because I have been asked some questions that indicate that there is some misunderstanding. The vote on this particular ordinance creates the TIFF district only. It is not a vote on the TIFF itself. It's not a vote on the development plan. It only creates the district and allows us to move on to consider these other items. So that's what's before the council this evening. I will open the floor to any discussion that the council has.
Jenna Bravsky, Ward Four, to add to Nathan's list of folks who provided input. Tanya and I got an email from a Ward Four resident who was not in favor of creation of the TIFF district, just this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. Anyone else? David?
David Watkins, Ward Three. I do think it's important that we, as a council and our residents, both here and who may be listening online and so, to realize that, again, we are not approving a TIFF agreement with the developer. We're just approving the creation of the TIFF district. It's really a procedural step that lays the groundwork for future discussions with the developer, which may or may not lead to a TIFF agreement with the developer. And if it does not lead to a TIFF agreement with the developer, we can always undo the TIFF district later, and then it reverts us back to a planned use district, and we see if either this owner, or if they sell it, some other property owner does something. So this does not irrevocably commit us to approving a TIFF agreement with the developer. It just is a procedural step that allows that to possibly go forward. And I think that's important, because in talking to some residents I don't know that they appreciate the distinction, because it is pretty technical. Thank you.
That is correct, David. Thank you. Anyone else? Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Past several months, we've discussed the TIFF district, and prior to that, we also discussed the developer, and how he has let that property get pretty rundown, and not really care that it's pretty rundown. And the city has made several overtures about how rundown that property is. Like I said previously, a lot of my constituents have called me and told me what they feel about this, and they're not in favor of the TIFF district. And they're pretty well read about it. It's not a misunderstanding about that we're going to vote for the TIFF now. It's the district itself. They understand what that is, and what can happen if we vote yes. I think more people are concerned right now, in my ward, that we have a couple, several businesses that are vacant now, and we're missing tax revenue to the city. Hula Hands, the children's store just went out, and there's another storefront in the Fairway Shops that are vacant. And that does a lot to the city's base and to the income base. I'm also concerned, as I always will be concerned, about the services to the city. And even though we can hope that it wouldn't make a difference to services, I tend not to agree with that. I tend to think that 10% more population within the city is going to make a big difference sometimes. Not always, but sometimes. And for those reasons, and for how I feel that we need to make better choices right now, and I don't think this is the choice to let a TIFF district be in the City of Fairway at this present time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I will.
Joe?
Joe Levin, Ward Three. This body has been approached several months ago regarding this property in question. I think there's no question that it's been abused and ignored. But by ignoring the possibility of a TIFF district, and I say district rather than the TIFF itself, that we have to keep an open mind. And at the end of the day, we want to know what is best for Fairway. It may not be this particular project, but eventually we're going to have to repair this property and do something with it. So the district at least facilitates that, but not necessarily guarantees it.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Okay. I will open item B to public comment, if there's any additional comments that someone would like to make at this time. Please come forward to the microphone. State your name and address for the record again.
Jim Poplinger, 5300 Aberdeen. I think I want to make it really clear, yes, I understand that this is just creating the district. However, I think that there is no point in creating the district, because it is simply not the right thing to do. As far as any other project, this project, any other project, my issue's not with the proposed project. If they want to do it on their dime, if they feel it's a viable project, they should be able to do it on their dime. It's not the responsibility of this city to upgrade private property. It's the responsibility of this city to maintain public property, public infrastructure, and public services. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I said, "thank you." Anyone else?
Sally Nelson, 5516 Splender. And I just want to very succinctly say, I think that our re-elected councilwoman, Kelly Music, just mimicked my opinion perfectly. So I want to say thank you. I agree with her totally.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close this item for public comment. Is there any additional discussion on the part of council before we call for a vote? Seeing none, is there a motion concerning this ordinance? Tanya?
Thank you, Tanya Keys. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 1745, which is an ordinance of the governing body of the City of Fairway, making findings and establishing a redevelopment district pursuant to KSA 12-1770 and amendments thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance number 1745. We will take a vote. Do we take a roll call? Okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I heard two no. Nathan, do you agree? All right, so the ordinance number 1745 passes. Six yes, two no. Moving on to item C. Consider engagement letter with Stiefel Nicholas and Company regarding redevelopment of 4210-4220 Shawnee Mission Parkway. This is an engagement letter with our financial advisor, particularly David Artiberry, who used to work with George K. Baum, and they were purchased by Stiefel. This particular engagement letter is covered under our funding agreement with the developer, and so those expenses will be paid through that funding agreement, not by the City of Fairway. Nathan, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. You'll have a copy of that letter in your packet. Counsel, is there any discussion concerning that engagement letter? All right, we'll open public comment concerning that engagement letter. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Nope. Okay, I will close public comment on item C, and I'll entertain a motion concerning that engagement letter.
I move that we consider the engagement letter, or we approve the engagement letter with, is it Stiefel Nicholas and Company? Nicolaus &amp; Co. Incorporated regarding redevelopment at 4210-4220 Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the engagement letter. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Item D on the new business agenda, consider Ordinance Number 1750, an ordinance repealing Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 222 of the Fairway Municipal Code regarding the start times of regular city council meetings. Just two comments. The ordinance proposes changing the start time to 6:30 PM effective December 1, 2021. The meetings will remain the second Monday of the month. Any discussion from the council? All right, we'll open public comment for item... Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly.
Since I wasn't on at Finance Committee last month, why did we discuss to move City Council to 6:30?
It had been raised several times by different individuals that we move the time earlier. So it was discussed during the Finance Committee, which is a committee of the whole, and the consensus was that we do move it to 6:30 and send it forth to the City Council.
Is it was for constituents or for the council and staff itself?
Pardon?
Was it for constituents?
The comments?
Yeah, or for City Council itself? Meaning, did constituents complain about it?
No, I, no, I, I had, I had council members say to me, why is our council meeting so late?
Kelly, I think you weren't there. I mean, and the one piece I heard was, we occasionally have city council meetings that last a long time, midnight or so. So moving it up one hour would help with that situation. That's one of the...
I do agree with that, Dan. However, I think citizens who would like to come to visit and speak at public forum don't have necessarily jobs that end at 5 o'clock. They have children, they have dogs, they have dinner, they have all sorts of things to do. And if they'd like to come, if you'd like to have public comment earlier, or so we wouldn't go so late, or do something different. But I think City Council at 7:30, I think, especially if you'd like to have executive board meetings early before that, I think it should stay at 7:30, please.
Any other discussion? Okay. I'll open public comment on item D concerning the, regarding the start time of our regular city council meetings. Nope. Okay, thank you, Chief. We'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion concerning Ordinance 1750.
David Watkins, Ward 3. I move that we approve Ordinance Number 1750, which is an ordinance repealing Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-22 of the Fairway Municipal Code regarding the start times of regular city council meetings.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance Number 1750. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, the motion passed. Seven yes, one no. Moving on to item E on the new business agenda, consider Ordinance Number 1751, an ordinance relating to the regulation of traffic within the corporate limits of the City of Fairway, Kansas, incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 48th Edition, with certain additions amending or re-adopting, and repealing existing sections 10 through 19 through, oh, no, 10-19 through 10-22 inclusive, and sections 10-48 through 10-66 inclusive of the Code of Ordinances, City of Fairway, Kansas, and repealing Ordinance Number 1729. Rich, I'll turn that over to you.
Rich Cook, City Attorney. So this is just kind of a housekeeping matter that we take care of each year. And so this is just an updated version of both of this, the Uniform Public Offense Code and the standard traffic ordinance. The next item on the agenda are both kind of just updated housekeeping matters. We'll repeal the ordinance that we passed last year and replace it with this new ordinance.
Any questions, counsel?
Jenna Bravsky, Ward 4. Maybe it's for Rich, but it looked like just the year and some kind of like cross-references, but nothing substantive was changed based on the red line. Do I have that right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll open public comment for this item. Chief, will you see if there's anyone that'd like to speak?
No.
Nope, okay, we'll close public comments, and I'll entertain a motion for Ordinance Number 1751.
I move to approve Ordinance 1751.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance Number 1751. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes unanimously. All right, new business item F, consider Ordinance Number 1752, an ordinance relating to the regulation of public offenses within the corporate limits of the City of Fairway, Kansas, incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Off... I want to say offense, because I'm playing football. Offense Code for Kansas City, 37th Edition with certain changes, amending and repealing existing section 8-25, 8-26, 8-27, 8-29, 8-30, and sections 8 through 49 through 8-55 inclusive of the Code of Ordinances, City of Fairway, Kansas, and repealing Ordinance Number 1726. Rich, if you'll introduce it, please.
Yeah, this is just, again, the same concept, but a different portion of the code. This is the Uniform Public Offense Code. So any questions? I have to answer.
Any questions or discussion, counsel? Public comment? Nope, okay, we'll close public comment on this item, and I'll entertain a motion for Ordinance Number 1752.
I move to approve Ordinance 1752.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance Number 1752. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously. That concludes our new business for this evening. Next item on the agenda is the governing body comment. During this time, members of the governing body will be given the opportunity to speak about matters related to the city. No formal action will be taken during this time. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring to our attention?
I do.
Jason?
So Kellyanne and I received an email just, and I figured I'd just bring this up now, about...
Jason, can you talk into your microphone?
Oh, yeah, can you not? Usually I don't have that problem. I don't want to scream. I know that we have, and we kind of went over this, I don't know, I feel like 18 months ago. Parking on the street, right? You have to move your vehicle. You can't leave it there any longer than 24 hours, right? But the issue that we're having, Fairway Road, I'm sure Aberdeen, or, you know, all the streets kind of in Ward 1, people parking directly across from each other. Is there anything that, other than, hey, be a good neighbor and don't do that? But I don't know if there's any way that we could... I have no idea how we, how we get the word out about that. Maybe send a constant contact. I don't know if there's anything from an ordinance perspective that we can do. I don't, I don't, I don't think, but it's, obviously, it's an issue, you know, for fire trucks. If people are parked literally right across from each other, there's going to be a problem. So we had a resident email us, and specifically towards the end of Fairway Road, and just figured I'd raise the issue and see if there's some conversation that we could start, or I don't know what the appropriate step is, so.
Certainly, we could do a public education campaign about, you know, not parking across the street from, you know, directly across the street from another vehicle. That, of course, depends on them being subscribed to receive the communication. We can certainly put something in the newsletter that would address that as well. I think that's, that's the route, the best route to go for initially is to try and do an education or awareness campaign. There are certainly options that the city could look into as far as ordinances that would regulate, you know, the sides of streets that are parked on, or, you know, there's a lot that we can look into it. But the cautionary tale there is that when you start to regulate the parking to that kind of extent on the public streets, you probably make more people upset than not.
Sure.
So I think it's something that, you know, we would want to exhaust all of our efforts before we would look at going down the road of codifying something that would result in a citation. But I can certainly make a note to Abby for future publications that we encourage residents to, not just them, but also their guests, ensure that they're parking in the driveway if they can, and if not, to make sure that they're, you know, either not directly parking across the street from one another, or I know another common annoyance is parking opposite of someone's driveway access. So we can certainly put that out there, you know, but as of today, it's not illegal to park on the street. So there's, you know, there's nothing that the police department can go out there and do today. We've, over the years, had numerous concerns around the pool with that, and to the point to where it was the former fire chief came in and joined us for a staff conversation about how to, how to address this. And there are times, I know, where the, both our police department and the fire department will respond to concerns about whether or not public safety vehicles can get through. And when those instances are validated, the police department will reach out to those that have created the concern and ask them to move their vehicles. So that does happen on occasion. I think if someone has an ongoing concern, or even just a one-off concern, they can always reach out to the police department, and the police department can look into that. The one thing I would say, you know, not to put words in the former fire chief's mouth, but he was always sure to reinforce the fact that if there was a fire, they'll get to it. They may not look pretty, but they will get to it to get their job done. So I think, you know, it's certainly something we're cognizant of. It's not a unique problem to Fairway. But I don't know, Chief, if you have anything you want to add to that.
The street has to be passable. So anytime that violations like that are occurring, which it is a violation, if we can't get a fire truck or an ambulance through, as well as a police car, or any car for that matter, we want to respond to that. So the call would be directly to us if you have people asking about that. Just have them notify us, and we will go down and handle it.
Yeah, and getting through is kind of the definition, right? Getting through with your mirrors folded in? Eh, probably. Fire truck? Zero chance, right? Any large, any vehicle larger than, you know, a normal... I mean, I don't know if you could get a F-250 down the street sometimes, right? So, or one of the Parks and, or not the Parks, right, the Public Works, you know, vehicles would struggle to come down the street. So best course of action would be to obviously just contact you guys then, right?
That's correct. We'll come out and address it. We have the ability to obviously figure out whose vehicle it is and then ask them to move nicely.
Okay. And then, you know, just kind of thinking, something happens every single year about this time. It's white in nature, falls on the ground, and needs to, needs to be moved. Probably a decent idea to throw it out there to not park on the street.
Public works normally since that...
Yeah, because it usually snows around this time.
It usually comes from administration where we remind people that it's much more expedient for our public works crews to pile the streets with fewer obstacles. So we typically, anytime we think there's going to be a plowable event, we will send out an email. In the event that we think it's going to be an extreme storm, the mayor does have the ability to declare a state of emergency, which would make it an enforceable offense if cars are left on the street. I think, I think it was probably two mayors ago since the last time that was required. But, I mean, you were talking a foot of snow. So generally, though, we always do try to encourage people via email and Facebook to get their cars off the street ahead of an event.
Cool.
Thank you, Chief, and Kelly Buzek, Ward 1. And thank you to Nathan, because I think about the congestion on the road that one of our neighbors told us about. I think it's just also talking to your neighbors. You're just right around you, and if you have someone come to your house, please be sure not to park right across the street from someone, because that's the problem. And it happens every day, every single day. And Mondays are worse than any other day because of the, because of trash and recycle. But thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. We will now open public comment for items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? No interest, one? Okay. We will close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time this evening.